We're starting late because the room wasn't available. We were ready to go, all of us. I call the Committee on Educational Policy to order. We'll take up the following items for approval. Action item 1A is the approval of the minutes of March 6, 2023. I move the approval of action item 1A. Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussions? All in favor? Anybody in favor? Thank you. All opposed? Any abstentions? It is approved. Now we will address the items on the policy calendar. Policy item 1B1A is a resolution to establish a program in urban studies and the built environment, leading to a Bachelor of Arts degree at the Bernard and Ann Spitzer School of Architecture at the City College of New York. I call on Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Wendy Hensel to provide further background on this item.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. The proposed program will fulfill the goals of City College and the School of Architecture to deepen their commitment to integrating the field of humanities, social sciences, the arts, and architecture into a multidisciplinary effort to understand the past and improve the future of local, national, and international urban communities through engagement in scholarly research and practice. This program will help cultivate students who are driven by a commitment to social justice and to learning through service to the community, and the intent of the program aligns with the university's commitment to career pathways and community impact. My esteemed colleague, Provost Toni List, is available to provide further background on this item, should you have any questions.
I move the approval of policy item 1B1. Is there a second? Thank you. Discussion. I have some questions, so can we have, or I have a question. Can we have somebody from SSA here?
Toni?
Come on down.
Can I bring the dean of the chair with me?
You can bring anybody you want.
Because I can only answer the easy questions.
Hi, everybody.
Good afternoon.
This is Marta Gutman, the Chair of Spitzer School, and Sean Weiss, the, I'm sorry, the dean of the Spitzer School, and Sean Weiss, the Chair of the Architecture Department.
Thank you. My only question. I noticed that several of the SSA faculty are giving a part of their time, anywhere from a sixth to a ninth of their time, to this new program. How is that going to affect what they're doing with their current programs in the School of Architecture?
So, the way we enroll, we enroll with electives that students in our various programs take, both at the undergrad and undergraduate, graduate and undergrad level. And we share these classes, so these faculty would basically continue teaching many urban-related courses that they already teach, that would then also enroll the proposed students from the BA in urban studies and the built environment.
That answers my question. Are there any other questions?
I have a question. Hello, Lou Delletti is from the Faculty Senate. I liked the proposal very much, and I was very, very happy to see that that's, you know, in the works and about to be launched. I was just wondering if you can give us a couple of examples of the community service. I know that was sort of a recurring theme throughout the proposal, that it'll be help to the communities and uplift in them and so on, so maybe, can you give us a little more explanation about that? How do you envision that, and is that already in the works?
Maybe we could ask some of the community partners, we're thinking of working with as potential places where students could go.
Yeah, so we, thank you for that question. We're in the process now of developing another program at Spitzer called the Place Memory and Culture Incubator, which we hope will be funded by the Mellon Foundation. And in fact, that proposal is due tomorrow. It's a big week for Spitzer. And with that, development of that grant, we are exploring relationships with various community partners in Harlem. For instance, the Broadway Malls Association, the folks who are working on improving the malls in, along Broadway in Upper Manhattan. We're working with While We Are Still Here, which is a preservation program. We're working with, we're working with Save Harlem Now, another preservation program. We're working with St. Nicholas Park Alliance. We have any number of feelers out within the, within the, within the community of Harlem, which is our, the neighborhood in which we exist. We also work closely with the J. Maxx Bond Center on Urban Futures, directed by Professor Sean Rickenbacker, and he too has extensive connections in the Harlem community. So we're going to start local and grow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Rosy Palacio.
Hey, good afternoon. I have one comment and one question. My one comment is, you made me want to go to school again, so, which is not an easy thing to do.
Well, thank you for that. We'd love to, we'd love to have you.
And in some ways, that sort of relates to my question, which I was, and I was wondering if you could tell me a little bit more about the 49.6 graduation rate. And the 14.8, the expectation about retention seems low, and this, you know, I have to say, from a both professional and personal bias, this seems like an incredibly exciting program. So it's just, I wanted to hear your thoughts about that.
So...
It's in fact a typo.
There was a typo.
Thank you.
And if you look at the, I said forms at the front of the document, you'll see that are...
On page six.
On page six, that the annual retention target is 80%,
Thank you.
and the target graduation rate is 70%.
Thank you. I feel more better now.
And thank you for catching that, because we did not.
We do read our materials. Thank you. Any further questions or any discussion? Let's proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? It is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you. Come, come study with us.
Policy item 1B1B. It's a resolution to establish a program in accounting, leading to the Associate of Science degree at Gutman Community College. I call on EVC Hensel to provide further background on this matter.
Thank you. Gutman is expanding enrollment, and the new accounting program is part of their strategic and deliberate effort to increase the number of academic programs on campus to support a larger student population. The proposed program will serve students who have a clear and specific goal of entering the accounting profession, providing the necessary foundation and training to be successful in baccalaureate programs and in such positions upon graduation. My esteemed colleague, Provost Nicola Blake, is available to provide further background, should you have any questions.
I move the approval of policy item 1B1B. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any, any discussion or questions? Seeing none, we will proceed to a vote. All in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Thank you. Policy item 1B1C is a resolution to establish a program in Health Services Administration, leading to the Master of Science degree at Lehman College. Again, I call on Provost Hensel to provide further background on this item.
Proposed program will serve CUNY's mission to prepare a diverse population of students for the future of work in a wide variety of possible professions where health services administrative skills are increasingly in demand, allowing them to develop the necessary skills for academic and professional advancement in this rapidly growing field. President Delgado is here and available to answer any questions about this item as needed.
I move the approval of policy item 1B1C. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? I do have some questions, so if we could have President Delgado or whoever. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I just need some clarification. You have divided your semester in half, so you're doing two seven-week sessions within one semester?
Yes.
And you've done the same with the summer session? So this is going to be...
We have. I, I got a guilty look, because we actually have, some undergraduate programs have divided to three, five-week sessions in one semester to facilitate learning loss and get them back up to speed. So they still have the same number of contact hours that are required by, by middle states. They still have the same number, the same outcomes that they would have in a normal semester. It's just the, the learning is more intensive.
So the master's program will be two full semesters plus a full summer session. When I was looking at the enrollment figures, they were growing by approximately, I think, 25 students. Is that, so it's 25 students the first year, there's going to be a new...
Cohort.
Cohort of 50 the second, 75 the third, and then up to full enrollment of 100 by the fourth year? Is that the intention?
Yeah, and I don't know that we'll be able to grow much more beyond 100, just for capacity's sake, in terms of teaching. But yes, that's, that's the goal. And, and part of that is based on conversations we've had with the larger medical systems in the Bronx and in Greater Westchester, so we have more players moving in. They keep telling us they want nurses, and then they separately tell us they want this, this, and this, and this, of back office people to help them run the, the business.
So what do you think, your, your capacity is a maximum of 100 if, if everybody keeps wanting more? Is it your capacity? It's not the, it's not the industry's capacity?
Well, I talked to the, the committee before this about donors, and two of those medical systems are on our target for big donors. And so if they would like to invest in some faculty, we certainly would have the capacity to, to offer more. And we could pivot, if we had the teaching capacity, we could pivot to online.
The proposal talks about the programs being not only in person, but synchronous and asynchronous?
Mm-hmm.
And each of the proposals seem to have, the new course is as synchronous online programs, is that correct?
Yeah.
What is the asynchronous part of it?
So the asynchronous would be leveraging our learning management platform, in this case, Blackboard, but the students wouldn't be necessarily meeting at the same, in the same space at the same time, watching video. It would be almost like a, a 21st century version of correspondence learning. So they would learn on their own within, within the parameters of, of the weeks of learning, whether they were full semester or a partial semester, to keep up with the cohort, but there wouldn't be a set time to meet.
So they won't be required to attend synchronous, the synchronous sessions?
No. No. And the synchronous is to capacity, so we have retrofitted nearly all of our classes over the last year, so we can teach a class face-to-face, and at the same time, teach students remotely and have them all engage. And so that's the synchronous component that's also at a distance.
Anybody else have any questions? Any comments? And let us proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate. All opposed? Any abstentions? The matter is approved. Thank you. Policy item 1B1D is a resolution to establish a program, excuse me, in computer science, leading to the Associate of Science degree at Queensborough Community College. Surprisingly, I call on Provost Hensel to provide further background.
You can just point from, from here. Queensborough offers a number of degree options in information technology, cybersecurity, and other computer-related fields, but is the only community college in the university not to offer an associate of science in computer science. The proposed program will serve students with interest in computer science by educating them on options, teaching them relevant skills, and offering them the opportunity to join a growing workforce. As a result, more students will be retained, graduate, and transferred to senior college programs. President Mangino, our fellow committee member, is here to provide background or answer any further questions.
I move the approval of policy item 1B1D. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion, any questions? My only thought is, it took a long time.
I agree.
But we're there.
Yes.
Any questions or any discussion? Let's proceed to a vote. All in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Thank you. Good luck. Policy item 1C1 is a resolution to establish the Department of Entrepreneurship and Innovation at Peru College. I call on Provost Hensel to provide further background on this matter.
Given the growth of the major, revised curriculum, and strategic cluster hiring, the maintenance of the entrepreneurship and innovation curriculum within a department of management is no longer suitable. The proposed department will address these issues while also aligning with the university's mission of being responsive to the needs of its urban community and preparing students for the evolving requirements of the workforce. If needed, my esteemed colleague, Provost Linda Essick, is here and can provide further background.
I move the approval of policy, policy item 1C1. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any, any discussion, any questions? Seeing none, let's move to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate. All opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy item 1C2 is a resolution to abolish the Department of Communications and Theater Arts at the John Jay College of Criminal Justice. I again call on Provost Hensel to provide further background on this item.
Demand for courses in this department at John Jay has been low since at least 2014 and is projected to decline even further, such that the continuation of the department is an unsound investment of resources. The learning outcomes of courses offered by the Communication Theater Arts Department are embedded throughout the curriculum at the college, and therefore, student education will not be compromised. Courses belonging to full-time faculty will be transferred to their new departments and offered or adapted. Remaining courses will be discontinued. My colleague, Provost Allison Pease, is here to answer questions that you may have.
Thank you. I move the approval of policy, policy item 1C2. Do I have a second? Are there any questions or any discussion? Yes, Mr. Calhoun.
Thank you. Okay, perfect.
Yes, please.
That would be great, thank you.
Are you, is your mic on?
Oh, can you hear me?
Is the green light on?
Yes, it is. Okay. Are we good? Okay. So, thank you. I see in the resolution, it speaks specifically to academic advisement that you have been giving students in order to navigate this change. Could you just elaborate on that, please?
Yes. So, there were 21 students who were minoring in theater or communication, and those students have met individually with academic advisors in order to complete those programs.
And they'll be able to complete?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Any other questions or any discussion? Seeing none, let's proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Those opposed? Abstentions? The matter is approved. Thank you. Policy item 1D1 is a resolution to amend the Bronx Community College Governance Plan. I call on Provost Hensel to provide further background.
The proposed amendments are designed to update the BCC Governance Plan and provide more consistency throughout the document. These amendments will provide more efficiency, transparency, and oversight in college operations and government. Susan Fiori, Council and Deputy to the President at Bronx Community College, is here and can provide further background if necessary.
I will move the approval of policy item 1D1. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion or any questions? Seeing none, let's proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Those opposed? This matter is approved. Policy item 1D2 is a resolution to amend the Brooklyn College Governance Plan. I again call on Provost Hensel to provide further background.
The current college governance plan does not define interdisciplinary programs for purposes of representation on the faculty council or provide for liaisons to faculty council from the undergraduate and graduate student government. These amendments to the Brooklyn, Brooklyn College Governance Plan are designed to clarify the eligibility of interdisciplinary programs to participate in faculty council and to memorialize the role of student government liaisons as attendees at these faculty council meetings. My esteemed colleague, Provost Anne Lopes, is here and can provide further background if necessary.
I move the approval of policy item 1D2. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any questions or any discussion? At last, we keep moving into the 21st century, it's a disciplinary, whatever. Seeing none, let's proceed to a vote. All in favor, please so indicate. Those opposed? Abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy item 1D3 is a resolution to amend the John Jay College Governance Plan. Again, I ask Provost Hensel to provide further background.
John Jay recently reviewed its charter alongside other binding documents, such as the Collective Bargaining Agreement and the Bylaws of the CUNY Board of Trustees, and wishes to make minor procedural clarifications to its charter consistent with other documents and longstanding college practices. The substantive amendments to the college's governance plan are designed to require non-departmental programs to adopt bylaws, helping ensure good governance, eliminate the possibility of faculty member who is on leave from being unduly pressured to participate in department elections. By giving faculty members in such scenarios the option to participate or not, no one is disenfranchised, but at the same time, no one attending to serious medical or personnel, personal issues is unduly pressured. For efficiency, the college also made housekeeping amendments that make clear that faculty members appointed to positions within the executive compensation plan lose their faculty voting rights while in these positions, and also make clear the rule that already exists in the bylaws of the Board of Trustees, that elections for Department Chair and Committee on Personnel and Budget require an affirmative vote from a majority of all eligible voters. Provost Pease is here to answer any questions.
Thank you. I move the approval of policy item 1D3. Is there a second? Any questions or any discussion? Seeing none, let's proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The matter is approved. Policy item 1E1 is a resolution to award Derek Adams with early tenure at Brooklyn College with an application of bylaw 6.2.2C2. Again, I call on Provost Hensel to provide further background.
Professor Derek Adams is a celebrated artist in his field and sought after by other educational institutions. He's produced work of the highest caliber while employing, I'm sorry, empowering the lives of underrepresented creatives in the spirit of and in service to the university's mission. CUNY and Brooklyn College should make every effort to retain Professor Adams. If necessary, Provost Lopes is here to answer questions.
I move the approval of policy item 1E1. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any questions or any discussion? Seeing none, let's proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate. Opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy item 1E2 is a resolution to award Zhu Zhao with early tenure at York College with the application of bylaw C.2.2C2. I ask Provost Hensel to provide further background on this item.
Provost Zhu Zhao is a highly regarded and impactful researcher in the field of pharmacokinetics, hope I said that right, pharmacodynamics. Her contributions to the academy and beyond are demonstrated by her collaboration with researchers, industry leaders, regulatory agencies, hospitals, and service to the chemistry community as the vice chair of the Regulatory Science Community at the American Society of Clinical Pharmacology and Therapeutics, and her election as Vice President for Education at the American Chinese Pharmaceutical Science Association. Dr. Zhao is sought after by other higher education institutions. Therefore, York College and the university should make every effort to retain her. My colleague, President Johnson Ains, that's not right, is here, President Ains is here to answer any potential questions about this request.
I move the approval of policy item 1E2. Is there a second? Any discussion or questions? I must say, as a chemistry major, I read it and I said, "What?" Way above.
That means it's really smart.
Way above. Any discussion? If not, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy items 1F1 through 1F17 pertain to resolutions to award honorary degrees at various colleges. I call on Provost Hensel to provide a summary.
And it's still long. At each of its commencements, the Colleges of the City University of New York recognize the achievement, achievements of exceptional private citizens by conferring to them honorary degrees. The university specifically honors individuals who, through their work, their research, their art, or their activism, have meaningfully contributed to building a better and more just society, thus reflecting the mission of our university. This spring's selection of esteemed honorees are Film and Television Video Editor, Documentary Producer Director Sam Pollard, activist philanthropist and founder of Chobani, Hamdi Ulukaya, multiple award-winning composer, conductor, and distinguished professor at Brooklyn College, Tanya Leon, distinguished City College alumnus and renowned architect Joseph Fleischer, founder and executive director of the Equal Justice Initiative, Brian Stevenson, cultural activist and former executive director of the Bronx Council on the Arts, Bill Aguado, former Congresswoman Carolyn Maloney, luminary in dance education nationwide and founder of the Arnold Graduate Dance Education Program at Hunter, Jody Gottfried Arnold, actress and founder of the Joyful Heart Foundation, Mariska Hargitay, Bronx native and former U.S. Attorney General Eric H. Holder Jr., in recognition of the 50th anniversary of hip-hop, luminaries Andre Harrell and Joseph Sadler, former New York State Assemblyman, Councilman, and Democratic Leader Jose Rivera, founder and executive director of the Cultural Museum of African Art, Eric Edwards, two-time winner of the Pulitzer Prize for Drama, Lynn Nodig, national political leader, bestselling author and columnist Steve Phillips, and global public health advocate and co-director of the Texas Children's Center for Vaccine Development, Peter J. Hotez.
Thank you. I move the approval of policy items 1F1 through 1F17. Do I have a second? Any discussion? I was just impressed with the breadth of the honorees.
Very impressive.
It's an amazing group. Any further discussion? We'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy items 1G1 through 1G6 pertain to resolutions to appoint distinguished professors at various colleges. I call on Provost Hensel to provide a summary of these items.
After a rigorous review process by the campuses, the Central Office, and an ad hoc review committee of distinguished professors, we present the following distinguished professor nominees for the Education Policy Committee's consideration. From the Brooklyn College Department of Art, Patricia Cronin; from City College, Benjamin Steinberg, Department of Mathematics; and Maria Tamargo, Department of Chemistry; from the Hunter College Department of Art and Art History, Cynthia Han; from Queens College, Emile Alkale, Department of Classical, Middle Eastern, and Asian Languages and Talia Schaefer, Department of English.
I move the approval of policy items 1G1 through 1G6. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion or any questions?
It's a quick question, and I apologize for not asking when you had a chance to meet earlier, but the community college faculty have been concerned about representation on distinguished professorships, and I'm wondering if you have statistics on how many applied and how many were turned down by these committees? Not, in total, not just...
I mean, to the best of my knowledge, all of the ones that applied in this cycle are in front of you today.
Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, let's proceed to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy item H is a resolution requesting the approval of the Faculty Personnel Matters Report of the Educational, excuse me, Policy Committee. I ask Provost Hensel to provide further background.
The information contained in this report includes appointments and reappointments with tenure and fellowship leaves that were previously reported to the Committee for Faculty, Staff, and Administration. Faculty are evaluated and reappointed on a systematic basis through a highly rigorous process involving local government, governance, as well as approval of the institution's chief academic officer and president, with the goal of awarding tenure to retain superior faculty. Fellowship leave is granted to faculty to conduct research, improve their teaching, or produce creative work as part of the nationally recognized responsibilities of the professoriate. The Faculty Personnel Matters Report of the Education Policy Committee being presented today... being presented today was generated in summary format from faculty data entered by the campuses into CUNY First, the university's system of record, between February 6th and March 26, 2023.
I move the approval of Policy Item H. Do I have a second? Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, let's proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy Item I is a resolution requesting approval of the Actions in the Curriculum and Academic Policy Dashboard. I call on Provost Hensel to provide further background on this matter.
Routine academic matters, local academic policies, and course inclusions in the university's general education program are presented to the Committee on Education Policy in summary form via an online dashboard. The new Curriculum and Academic Policy Dashboard makes it possible for all the trustees to interact with this summary data. Using the new dashboard format, trustees can explore geographic representations and charts of the academic activity from the previous month and over time using various tools and filters. We're confident that the trustees will find this a valuable tool to employ in learning more about our most recent academic activity. A few highlights from this month's dashboard include: The classification of four new general education courses among the colleges, giving students more options to study the physical science, mathematics, and the humanities; Seventeen program actions; and three new or revised policies.
Thank you. I move the approval of Policy Item I. Is there a second? Any discussion or any questions? Proceed to a vote. All in favor, please indicate. All opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. There are no further items on the policy calendar. We'll now move to information items on the agenda, and surprisingly, I ask University Provost Hensel to proceed with the presentation of information. Will join on this, is that correct?
That's correct.
I turn it over to you.
Great. Since the honorary degrees were considered at this meeting, we wanted to inform you of three honorary degrees that were previously approved by the Board but will be conferred in spring 2023 commencements. These are for the Graduate Center, Actor and Human Rights Activist George Takai; for Hunter College, the multiple award-winning actor, filmmaker, author, playwright, composer, and lyricist Lynn Manuel Miranda; and for Queens College, Actor and Filmmaker John Favreau. Final information is a report of the CUNY Office of Careers and Industry Partnerships presented by University Associate Provost Lauren Anderson, and this is a part of what we hope to bring you each time, a little more information about the specifics of what we're doing on the campuses. Lauren?
Hello, good evening. Good to be here. It's nice to see some familiar faces, but for those of you who do not know me, I serve as the University Associate Provost for Careers and Industry Partnerships, which was a position that was elevated to the Chancellor's Cabinet and to the Provost's Cabinet about a year ago. And that elevation reflects the importance that career success has here at CUNY as a university-wide priority, as well as its essential integration into the academic enterprise here. So I am happy to be here just to provide you with a quick update on how the work to prepare our students for careers is evolving, how our work with industry partners is evolving, and to give you a sense of the ambitious goals that we have in this space. You all should have a presentation in your prep materials.
We have it loaded, too.
Great, excellent.
We're going to put it up on the board. Let's wait a moment.
Thank you. Terrific.
We'll get the zapper in a moment.
Yeah. Okay. It also moved down if it's easier. Yeah. At any rate, while we get started. So everyone at this table, thanks to Raj Shetty, certainly understands that CUNY is a nationally-recognized engine of economic mobility across the city. Perhaps what some of you might be less familiar with is the fact that in the founding documents of the Free Academy 175 years ago, there was both the objective of providing a first-rate, free public education to students regardless of means or background, but also providing an education that qualifies students for usefulness hereafter. That is written into the documents. And that is really important because we know that so many of our students come to us today for that purpose of understanding that a degree is going to help them pursue the future that they want, the careers that they want, the jobs that they want. And we know that for us here at CUNY, the impact that we have on these students not only benefits them, here's a group of our Futures and Finance students who aspire to be professionals in the financial sector, but it also has a huge impact, obviously, on their family and our communities. In the interest of time, I won't go too deeply into this, but we know that CUNY reaches so many students here across the New York City area that 34% of them come from households that are earning less than $20,000 for whom careers are transformational, for not only students but their families, that we actually are a major employer of 40,000 individuals across the city, and that 20,000 of those are faculty members who can serve as experts to the local community and to businesses that are looking to hire more students. And additionally, we have some information on the economic impact of CUNY's campuses in their local communities. So this work is tremendously important, not only for the individual amplification and boost that it can give students, but also because this is a major area and opportunity for partnership with the city and state in order to make the entire city and state a more equitable, inclusive economy. However, we're not quite living up to our full potential yet. About 66% of our bachelor's students are consistently employed at time of graduation, and many CUNY graduates in high-demand field earn less than their equally qualified peers. Moreover, the number of industry partners or employers that we're working with across our 25 campuses is not currently knowable right now. We do not currently have a single system for understanding it. And that's challenging because we know that for many of our students, they don't necessarily have robust professional and familial networks, and therefore, we have to be the proactive connection to employment for them. This is additionally important because based on the data that we do have, we know that when industry partners or employers work with us in developing students and have more opportunities in helping to be part of the preparation of students, they hire more of our CUNY students. So it's really important that we have the ability to bring them in the door and help them navigate to, not just the students for the purpose of hiring, but for the purpose of providing insight and feedback and being a part of that professional preparedness. So fortunately for us, in terms of addressing these challenges, the barriers to improvement are known and surmountable. We have many instances where, across CUNY, we are demonstrating that it's possible to overcome these challenges. One is that our system is difficult to navigate for industry partners. It's unclear where the front door is and how they reach down to students and to faculty and staff. Two, campuses are lacking the last-mile capacity they need for really engaging with industry in building these partnerships and collecting insights and feedback. Three, our system lacks universal technology needed to implement partnerships, such as the ability to track employer relations, but also the technology needed for students to actually explore careers consistently from one campus to another. And we know that even if all of these things were true, our students face unique constraints when it comes to their time, and many, therefore, do not opt in to ancillary career-preparedness services. Only 25% of our students actually utilize career services versus the 100 that actually go to classes, the 100% that actually go to classes. And many of those students say that they trust faculty or their professors as the number-one source of information for careers for them. So if we are going to really boost student career success and transform our institution into one that can more fully meet its potential, we are not able to just implement programs that are on the margins of this work. We really are pursuing a number of ambitious changes in order to ensure that campuses have the resources they need to be able to really bolster student career success. And that is reflected in our four strategic plan pillars. Across each of these, there's an example of how the tactics that we're pursuing for career success is embedded. For instance, whether it be ensuring that more working adults have access to degree and non-degree pathways, bolstering enrollment by working together with employers to make sure that working adults have access to degree pathways paid for by their employers, as we're doing with Amazon and Mount Sinai, amongst others. Also additionally, when it comes to amplifying our ability to exceed predicted student outcomes, not only doubling down but tripling down on industry partnerships and internships to really ensure that our students are getting the applied experience they need to get a foot in the door. Additionally, we have a bold goal around expanding the number of industry partners who are turning to CUNY for recruitment to our campuses, and of course, putting technology in place to help us ensure that students are prepared on demand when they need it in their own time and space. Doing all of this, though, and executing ambitious plans requires that we have the infrastructure here at CUNY in order to be effective in shepherding those goals and then making sure they're actually done. And so about a year ago, the Chancellor elevated the office that was previously known as the Office of Continuing Education and Workforce Programs, rebranded it, and that is our Office of Careers and Industry Partnerships today, signaling that it is not just non-degree students who have a need for industry-validated credentials and a pathway to employment, but really reflecting that this work is being done across all of our campuses and all of our degree programs, and signaling to employers that there's a clear front door for them to come to, to be able to navigate to our programs. I will, in the interest of time, just skip over this, but we are working very closely with the mayor and other senior elected officials to lay out a very clear goal for what it is we're trying to achieve, and together with them, have the resources to do it. And by 2030, the goals that the mayor's team and we have laid out together is to help more students connect careers more quickly at salaries that are competitive, and also help more businesses grow inclusively. Because if businesses know they can turn to CUNY to help them grow, they're going to turn to CUNY increasingly as they grow for talent, and we have the ability to influence how they do that in a more equitable way that opens more doors for our students. And so the specific goals around this is that by 2030, 100% of our students are going to achieve their desired outcome, and at least 80% of them will be connecting to consistent employment. Again, we're at 66% today for bachelors, moving up to 80%, and their wages will be on par with market peers. To do that, we think that it is essential that we engage 20,000 businesses more deeply in this work, and 20,000 employers, not just private sector, but public sector, too, in order to ensure that they're growing and growing thanks to CUNY talent, expertise, et cetera. So how we're going to get there, and I'll be brief and then just provide a few quick examples of what we're already doing. We know, thanks to some of the work that's already been done across our campuses and thanks to the leadership that has embraced these goals at CUNY, that there are a couple of things that are needed in order to ensure that we can realize our objectives. One, we're building an industry campus backbone that also serves the public sector as well. Capacity has to be built at the campus level. Our campuses need the resources that are essential to building these partnerships directly where students exist and to also building partnerships with faculty at the ground level. Additionally, we are supporting those faculty and recognizing the ones that integrate career aspirations into their curriculum. Just earlier today, we actually had a meeting of our 50 Career Success Fellows, who are faculty members across our campuses who have committed to working more closely together and with partners to be able to integrate career goals and high-impact practices into their curriculum. So we're very excited about that growing. And we're also increasing, as I mentioned, the percentage of students securing paid internships as well as paid apprenticeships embedded within degree paths for students. And we are exploring alternative pathways to economic mobility, such as entrepreneurship, which is very important. Just to give you a very quick picture of what some of these efforts look like, we have successfully established a front door for industry partnerships here. Our industry support hub in the Office of Careers and Industry Partnerships has staff that are dedicated to working with industry to make sure that they can get down to the campuses and to the places that want to build these relationships to connect students to roles. We have specific sector specialists in health, tech, and green fields right now with the hope of expanding further. And we are using this hub to not only ensure that we're connecting students to job opportunities, but also connecting to employers who would love to send their workforce back to school and support them through school. This all depends on us implementing a CRM and a CUNY-wide system of technology for tracking these actual relationships. And we're getting support in this. This is part of a $16 million public-private partnership with Mayor Adams, as well as Cognizant and a couple other businesses. It is modeled on successful initiatives that have already been happening across CUNY, including CUNY 2X and Career Success on Campus, which many of our campuses have been driving. And the idea is that, right now, we are embedding these resources, which include an industry specialist and a hybrid career and academic advisor into campuses across nine of our campuses. And we think that this model works because we've seen it work before, but we're exploring and testing and making sure that it works in this context before scaling. But these folks are on the ground, embedded within departments, working with students and working with employers to connect students to opportunity. This also includes a 2,000-person internship program, career launch, that actually will help to provide students with opportunities. Two specific examples that I just wanted to bring to your attention in terms of sector-specific partnerships that we have at the moment. One is CUNY Futures and Finance, which is a partnership with Bloomberg, Centerbridge Partners, Goldman Sachs, and 25 other employers. This is starting at Brooklyn, CCNY, and Lehman, and is designed to ensure that students are not only getting access to and have awareness of absolutely essential pathways for accounting, business, finance, and econ majors, but also that these partners are actually, together with us, bringing more opportunities for employment to campuses. So that is one effort that's already touched 1,800 students in its first year. Additionally, as many of you know, we are working with the New York City Jobs Council on a broader collaboration with 32 of the city's leading employers, the CEOs of them. And one of the things that we are really excited about, this says five new apprenticeships, but since this was submitted, we've actually announced that we're tripling the number of our apprenticeships that are embedded within Applied Associate degrees. So students are earning, they're working, while they're actually getting credit, nine credits within these AAS pathways. We're really excited to continue to build out this partnership. And as I mentioned before, this is really not seen as separate or apart from degree pathways, but rather integrated. So we're working together with our partners at the New York Job CEO Council to really get the information we need from employers to effectively help map in key in-demand occupations. What are the courses? What are the career milestones that students have to have to achieve in order to successfully move into these jobs that we know are critical and that employers have committed to turning to CUNY for? So we're really excited to be continuing to build out that partnership and are thrilled with its success in the apprenticeship realm so far. Finally, we know that many of our students, particularly our undocumented students, it's not easy for them just to move into jobs and careers. So it is essential, not just for those students, but that we pursue an opportunity for us to actually build entrepreneurial mindset and build pathways to entrepreneurship for students. Congratulations to Brook and their founding of their new department on entrepreneurship. We've been doing this additionally in partnership with nine campuses through a centrally-led initiative with Blackstone called Blackstone Launchpad, which is providing thousands of students with the opportunity to participate in competitions, as well as funding at campuses some work to create innovative curriculum around these topics. We are really thrilled that two of the Blackstone Launchpad Ideas Competition winners this year were from CUNY schools, were teams from CUNY schools, and that is a national competition that our students are winning. So we are really excited to continue to build out this work because we see it as a pathway for many students that don't have it currently. So there is much more ahead of us. We're going to be continuing to build our infrastructure to be able to engage industry. We're going to continue to build out campus capacity as well as the partnerships that we have to support faculty throughout this. And we really appreciate your support, both in getting the word out there as well as recognizing and supporting some of the upcoming technology initiatives that are coming down the pipe because they are really essential to reaching students at scale with the work we're doing. So I'll stop there.
Thank you. Associate Provost Anderson, are there questions or comments for either of our provosts who are here?
I just want to say, congratulations. I think what you're doing is wonderful. I think it's so essential for the success of CUNY to provide students with employment. I mean, that's what it's all about. At the end of the day, they want to get out of CUNY and get a good job and make some money and support their families. And in my view, that's what CUNY is all about, and I congratulate you on what you're doing, and keep it up.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Thank you for the presentation, very helpful.
Of course.
Great job. Okay. With no further items on the agenda, I move to a adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any opposition? We stand adjourned. Thank you all for your cooperation. Thank you all for your cooperation. Wendy, I'm sorry we didn't have anything more for you.